Yes, Ms. Stowe will be walking through backlog policies.
Okay, well, in any case, we'll, we'll work on the minutes and then we'll, we will wait for her if necessary. Um, so board members, I don't know if you've had a time to, to review the minutes. Um, I have a couple of requested changes, but I'll give everyone a couple of minutes to look through those unless you already have.
Okay, I've, I've had a chance to review it.
Okay. Um, my, I'll just go ahead and share my two things. There were some typos on, or they, um, the bullet point, second bullet on the Okay, now I've lost them. Anyway, there are some typos on the second page, just simple stuff like words joined together and things like that.
Yeah, I see them. The second bullet on the second page.
Okay.
And I I can share that with Ms. Farkas to make those corrections. I believe she did the minutes for this meeting.
Okay, that would be great. And then, um, at the bottom of the second page, it says, in lieu of a full equity audit right now, Chair McKenzie will work with Dr. Keeling, et cetera, et cetera. Um, I don't know, I feel like, I mean, I, I, I think the sentiment was kind of like, since an equity audit probably isn't going to play out right now, but not like, this should take the place of an equity audit. Um,
I agree. I, I think that phrase "in lieu of" could just come out because I agree it wasn't meant to be in lieu of.
So if it could just start at Chair McKenzie.
Okay.
I don't want anything misrepresented, but I wa- just wasn't sure that that's exactly what we meant by that, so.
Absolutely.
Any other?
Um, I just had one thing. I wasn't sure. On the, um, first page around the, um, waiving the policy around names, um, I, like, ultimately what we did end up doing is, I think, voting and having two-thirds approval to accept names as possible, names of buildings. Um, but, uh, I didn't know that, I don't think that that's what we actually talked about doing, like, that is, that's ultimately what happened in the next board meeting, right? Like, I, I didn't realize we were gonna have to vote on that, if that makes sense. I thought we were just saying, yes, the policy committee is open to it.
Um, Say that again, Sarah. I don't, I don't quite understand what you were saying.
Yeah, so this bullet, so, um, it says, "The committee is receptive to taking recommendations for naming this re-schools, the schools for people." And, and maybe instead of receptive, just say open, actually, like, that kind of implies like, and then, um, or a two-thirds majority or five would need to agree to waive this section when the plan for renaming is brought for approval. If it's approved, the board will receive names as suggestions during the renaming process. I just didn't remember us having a company, did we have a conversation like that about like, in order to accept names as the process, we needed two-thirds approval?
I think we talked about that that was one way to do it, but I, I agree, this is a little confusing. Um, I do think that that sentence could also come out because the, I think we talked about that you could approve it upfront, or you could approve it later.
So removed, uh, uh, the two-third majority or five, is that?
That sentence is correct. It's the very last sentence in that bullet where it says, "If the two-third majority is approved."
Okay, I'll delete that.
Sarah, you did with that, are you still?
Yeah, 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 no, that's fine. I just, the, the like, which part of this conversation did we have during policy? Which part did we have during the full board meeting? I just wasn't, thank you. I wasn't, um, super clear on, but I think that makes sense.
Good with everything else? Motion to approve with changes?
So moved?
Yes, okay, go ahead, Sarah.
Do a second, Ms. Stevens?
No, no, Sarah was in first.
Okay, but are you the second?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. Then I guess we vote. Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
I vote yes also. So the minutes are approved. Thank you, everyone. Um, so, the next thing we're gonna do is start a project of working through the backlog of, um, policy updates from the School Boards Association. And there is Ms. Stowe, right when we need her, hello. Um, so I will turn it over to her. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. So I hope that you have access to the Google Doc. Um, it's attached to the agenda item.
So I think that it was attached under B, where it says, "Policy Review and Updates." So it kind of looks like it's a different agenda item, but it's all the same thing. So if you click on Item B for this meeting, that's where the Google sheet is.
And we'll make sure it's attached where it needs to be as well.
I think once we get, um, Ms. Wallington up and going and
Yeah, and I see it up above as a PDF, but it's helpful to have it in the Excel version.
Okay. Do you have it, Ms. Stevens?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just making sure everyone has it open.
Yep, I think we're good.
Okay, perfect. All right, so let me just, I wanna, as you're looking at this document, and we'll go through each, um, uh, policy, but just wanted to give you just kind of overview of where we're at and what we're trying. So, uh, the School Board Association, um, if you're not aware, um, in the fall, we digitized all of our policies, which is fabulous. So now we're able to click, anyone can search policies. Uh, it will, um, keep updating them and maintaining them much easier, uh, just because technology is just easier. When it's online, it's easier. So, um, as part of that process, our, um, um, the, the, the Board Association staff that was assigned to us, who's Sam Thorpe, and he was at our last meeting, um, realized that we had policies that, um, needed to be updated or cross-referenced, and that we might have done it, but because it wasn't digitized, he didn't have, you know, that we don't have evidence or proof of. So he advised that we establish some sort of process to go through the policies and just make sure everything is up to date. And so what I, um, what this is an attempt to do is just to, I took a handful of policies from different sections to see, um, and to just try something today, and if it doesn't work, then we'll do something else. Um, I think it'll take a couple times, uh, just to get used to the process. Uh, but ultimately, we've got hundreds of policies that we need to go through. Um, so thought I would just, um, start here. Couple of quick things. Um, on the policies, you'll see on this chart, uh, there's a link to our current policy. There's a link to the School Board Association's current recommendation. Um, and then the recommendation column is, is, um, what I have just put in as a recommendation. Moving forward, if the policy is specific to special education, then we would have, um, Connie Krimmons make the recommendation. If it's curriculum instruction, we have someone from that department. I just chose policies, um, right now that I felt like were pretty straightforward. Um, and then the primary difference column is just letting you know what, what is the difference between the two. Um, a couple of other things, um, you'll see in the primary difference in, in the red. We will automatically update cross-references. So if there's been a legal statute or anything in the, the section at the very end of the policy that refers to, um, updated information, we're gonna just put that in. Um, and as a part of this process, we'll also note the date, um, because some of these have dates where the last review, it states, you know, it was 2014, but obviously we're reviewing them now, so we'll update that. That's item one. The second item, if you look at Row 15, um, Policy 5026, uh, this is one example. The School Board Association recommends having double and triple policies. And what that means is that you take a policy, and because it applies to students and staff, you have the same policy in the student section, you have the same policy in the staff section. And they do that, uh, because, uh, they basically work with, I think, 79 districts, uh, specific to this, um, Google, uh, uh, search engine for policies. And they find that, uh, it makes it user, more user-friendly, because some employees may go straight to the personnel section and not look anywhere else. Um, so they recommend having double and triple policies, and all that you do is, you have your policy, nothing changes in the verbiage, but at the top, it's now 5026 and 7250, so that you can see it in two locations. Um, and then you'll see the Service Animals in Schools, Policy 5029, is a triple policy. So they recommend that it be in three locations, same exact policy. Right. So that's high-level overview. Um, I hope this will make it simple. Um, there are, oh, a last thing, and then I'll, I'll be, then I'll get going. If you note the policies that, um, in the, uh, the link to the NCNSBA current recommendation, there are a couple, um, there is no link, and it's because the policy is specific to Orange County schools. There, there is no policy recommended by the School Board Association with that number, title, or detail. So it's a policy that we, uh, created and established. And so as part of this process, we just need to, just think, one, do we need it? And if we do, great, because there, there are some recent examples where we created policies that are specific to us. But the second piece is if the policy that was established, for example, two of these in 2004, does it need to be a policy, or can it be a program? Can it be an initiative? Can it be a protocol? Or does it need to be a policy? And, um, the NCNSBA, their, their concern was just to make sure our council has reviewed these, because in 2004, it ma- it was a great idea, but we just want to make sure that, that there's nothing that's happened in the past 17 years that makes it a bad idea to have it as a policy. So Eva, glad you're on the call. Um, so, with all that said, any questions about anything I just said? No questions. That just makes sense to me. And I like that you have the ones that are specific to us that you just put in, the like, when was this last updated? Because it helps give us a sense of, you know, yeah, that. Okay. All right, yeah, yeah, this is, this is like a work of love. Like, it was first not my best friend, but now I'm like deeply invested in this. Um, so anyway, let's start with, um, uh, Row 1,000. I want to just go through the ones that I don't rec- we don't, I don't recommend an update. And by the way, if you do, uh, you're not gonna hurt my feelings at all. Um, I'm just trying to be helpful and efficient with your time. So, uh, Policy 1,000, the only difference is that the state, um, policy includes the word "public," and we do not. Um, Ms. Stevens reminded me of that a couple of months ago, but we are not Orange County Public Schools. We are Orange County Schools. So that is the only difference. So if we change it, we'd be changing our name. So I don't recommend to update that.
Check. Anyone disagree with moving forward with that? I guess we should just, should we do this off the end, I guess, if we're gonna have to vote on?
I don't think you have to vote to not change something.
Right, okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, I do think you could sort of keep a running list of changes and then vote on the, the slate at the end.
Okay, and, um, oh, one thing I was gonna share with the committee is that, um, Ms. Stone and I have spoken, and we, we've kind of decided that if there's something that we come across that we feel like we need to wordsmith or tweak, we're going to pull it to the side for a later conversation, so that we can kind of keep this work streamlined and, and efficient. And then we can, there'll be time, in typical meetings, there'll be time for new policies or things we want to wordsmith, and this time for working on the backlog. So, um, that's our, that's our hope.
Okay, the second one with no updates, um, is 2,000, and these are identical. So there, there isn't an update to approve or accept the operational goals of the board. And the third one, um, is, uh, Policy 5022, Registered Sex Offenders. Um, the only difference is at the very bottom, the Score Association includes more cross-references, um, and that could, uh, that would be something we'd have to review, because we'd have to make sure all of the cross-references, they include, uh, that our policies are identical. Uh, so, I, I don't, again, it, it doesn't change the policy at all. It would just include more background information. So I don't, uh, recommend adding those without reviewing all of them. All right, so those are the three with no updates. Um, let's see, I'm just gonna go in order. All right, and I wanted you to know too, I pulled like random numbers, because I just wanted to kind of get an idea for what this looks like. Um, and also moving forward, I, I don't want to bog down one department and do 20 policies in one section, and the same person's having to review them all. Um, all right, so Policy 1010, Board Authority and Duties. Um, I do, I'm, I'm making a recommendation for an update. So, in our policy, we include Item 6, um, which is, um, a, a, a purchasing, acquiring, selling, conveying, and releasing school property, uh, both real and personal in the manner provided by law. So, the, um, the state does not have that item. And so I, I inquired, why don't you have that? Well, they don't have it, because the state has Policy 9,400, which states that, and then states more. Um, so the recommendation is, I mean, Item 6 can stay. That policy doesn't need to be updated. Uh, but I do recommend we look at Policy 9,400 at the state level, and that we consider adding that, because it takes Item 6 and goes into more detail about the board's authority, um, with regards to property, uh, sale or acquiring, uh, and, um, and as previously stated, if Eva has anything she wants to contribute, um, please do so.
No, I agree with your recommendation to have a separate disposal of board property policy. I think it's, it's a good thing to have. Um, and I'm not able, the links in the Google Doc don't work for me. It tells me I don't have access. But I have seen, I, I have like other people's policy manuals up, so I can see, and so I have seen 9,400, at least as other districts.
Okay, so does that mean that, um, we do have a, a board, uh, a district account where we can log in? So I probably need to share that with the board.
Are other folks able to, like, if you click on that link for 9,400?
That one link I can't, but the other links I can.
Oh, okay.
I can.
Oh, really? I'm in the PDF version, because I was having issues with.
Oh, I'm in the
In the Google sheet, I'm under, um, Row or Column E, and I clicked on it there. And then when the little window pops out, I click on that.
Yeah, it may just be because you have an OCS email address in the doc.
I, um, I down, okay, yeah, so what I did, I downloaded the PDF version, um, of, of the Policy 9,400. So everyone, okay, that's why I probably, I, I probably only shared the Orange County emails. Sorry about that.
And that's okay. I, um, but yeah, I, I agree with that recommendation. Disposal of surplus property is something that has a lot of legal requirements, and it is good for staff to have a policy to look at.
Well, let's leave Item 6 and add that policy then, because, but when it comes for a first reading to the board, we would all review it and make sure.
So that's no change to 1010, but new policy 9,400.
Everybody good with that?
Yeah, can I, um, say, while we're in 1010, um, uh, I don't want to get into all the nitpicky stuff everywhere, but like, this is like, this, it says, this is the, what the board considers its most significant duties, and then like, hiring the superintendent and considering the budget, and like, those are like way down in the list. I'm like, the like, property thing is above it, like, I just, from a like, the public understanding what we think our job is, like, I would like the most important things at the top of the list.
I'm gonna put Policy 1010 on a, we'll come back to it at a meeting soon.
I think it needs to take a long time. I'm just like, okay, selling property not as important as hiring the superintendent, you know?
So, let me say one thing. Um, I mean, as far as, so what the School Board Association model policy essentially looks like yours, except it doesn't have Number 6.
Okay, so they're in this order, is what you're saying?
They're in this order, except for that.
Okay.
It just means each time you gotta update, you'd have to
compare them. Okay.
But you can take out Number 6, because you're gonna address that elsewhere.
Should we, do you guys want to take out 6?
Or move it to the bottom?
I want to take it out. This says, these are our most important things. I, like, if we're gonna have a separate policy.
I'm good with that. Brenda, what do you think?
I'm absolutely good with that. I am.
Okay. Let's take Number 6 out.
Okay.
What, what were you gonna say, Brenda?
No, I was just saying, I see where you're coming from, because hiring the superintendent is at the top of our list. You know, that's how we end up getting in the weeds on this other stuff. You know?
Yeah.
Great.
Okay, and I'm making note of that in the Google Doc, so this will be a point of reference, um, for the updates. Okay, so, um, Policy 2011, uh, sorry, 2001. All right, so this is specific to OCS, and this was last approved, uh, in 2004. And, uh, I just have a, yeah, by the way, I, I want you to know also, when I'm going through this, this is like cleaning out a closet. I start just throwing stuff out, so y'all don't have to keep me in check, okay? Um, because that's not my intent to throw anything out that's meaningful. But my question is just, is this needed as a policy? Because Policy 1010, Board Authorities and Duties, uh, seems to cover this, but I will just put that as a question to you, is 2001 needed? Um, and, and again, this goes back to Sam's point, that if we have policies that don't align with theirs, they can't provide us any updates. And so we, we would need our legal counsel to regularly review these and make sure that, that there's nothing there, um, that would put us in a situation we don't want to be in.
I, my recommendation is that it's not needed, and I also agree with always eliminating unnecessary or redundant policies.
I'm good with that. I think we need to make sure that we are writing careful abstracts for the public when we go around chopping policies like this, but, um, fine with that.
Yeah. I'll also say, like, there's some stuff in here that I'm like, well, we're not even doing this, that I can tell. Like, the last sentence, "To this end, the board will annually consider, develop, and adopt major objectives for the year as part of long-range planning for improvement." I mean, that's a great idea, and I would love for us to be doing something like that, but we're not. I don't know.
Brenda, you good with us chopping this one?
Okay, go.
Yes, I was, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Yes.
Just, this is Teresa, just for clarification, we're deleting Policy 1010?
2,001.
2,001.
2,000.
And I've noted that, Teresa, on the Google Doc.
Thank you, and I believe Ty has also worked to, um, take minutes and make any corrections as well, so it'll be a group effort.
That's always best. All right. The next one, uh, Policy 2005, School Superintendent Appointment. Uh, this is one specific to us, last approved in 2004 as well. And, uh, I'd like to carefully review it. However, hiring a superintendent is in Policy 1010, under your authority and duty, so I'm not sure if this is needed.
Do we have other policy on hiring a superintendent as well, or is this?
I searched, um, appointment, appointing, and, uh, it didn't come up anywhere but the 1010, and it, and it wasn't appointment, it was hiring.
Yeah, what 1010 says is, "One of your significant duties is hiring superintendents, supporting the superintendent, evaluating and responding to recommendations by the superintendent." The, the part of this policy about like, the last two sections of it, at any time after 12 months, and if new board members have been elected, that's straight out of state law, so, um, you don't have to have it in policy. It will still be true, whether you have it in policy or not.
It seems like we do have a policy in per- the Personnel Section about the superintendent's contract. And so it seems like, I don't know if that's like literally the State School Board Association policy or not, but like, if those are about the con- the terms of their contracts, like, we could potentially say some of this there if we need to.
Yeah, I do feel that this policy is somewhat stating the obvious, and that all of these things will be true, whether you have them in policy or not, just to the extent that helps.
I'm all for cleaning house, if we don't need it, getting rid of it. Committee members?
I agree. My question, um, to, to our legal counsel is, we were talking, hiring an appointment, in my opinion, they're different, because you don't always hire. Sometimes you just, because, and I was, and I have to tell you, and I'm trying to, because we've been doing a lot of appointing, because you know, we've been so many. So, I'm just wondering, you know, while initially, at first glance, it seemed redundant, but, um, you know, I don't know what we're gonna run into down the road. Sometimes we do need to appoint somebody to the position before we actually hire somebody, because sometimes the appointee is not the hiree. I mean, the person's gonna be hired. I, I don't know. I agree, I want to clean it up, but I don't want to leave a gap for somebody to catch, catch us in the future.
Yeah. No, I think, um, so appointing to me is putting someone, I mean, I think a superintendent is both hired and appointed at the same time, because they're a public official who are fulfilling like a, a job created by statute, um, but they're also paid, you know? So, I think the use of appointment in this policy is probably more a reflection of the fact that it's an older policy at a time when we use that more formal language.
Okay.
But I, I was looking to see if the, uh,
Yeah. And I see what you're saying. I just know, sometimes we're not ready to And I see what you're saying. I just know sometimes we're not ready to hire somebody and we'll get somebody, I'm not saying somebody off the street to appoint them in, in that position, you know, for a while, but, um, I'm good with whatever my colleagues go with. Cleaning up is good.
Yeah, I like cleaning up too. Um, you know, I realized there's like a, there's a different policy called like Emergency Succession, which might be a little bit more like that. And so that, if that's covered somewhere else, then maybe we don't. Yeah.
Okay, good idea, because that emergency succession is important because we've needed it once, our board. That's nothing to be proud of.
Well, I'm just, I, you know what, I'm not gonna, this pandemic is not over. I'll just say like.
That's right.
Times like this.
Yeah.
So, I, I, I think that that, you know, what you're talking about with appointing an interim, is probably better addressed elsewhere. And it seems that the words legally are used interchangeably. And when I'm looking at the statute now, it says, "The local Board of Education shall elect the superintendent," you know? It all, um, amounts to the same thing. But yeah, I mean, I certainly agree that you need a policy for how you're gonna fill an interim need.
Right.
But we, we do have that, right? I feel like we looked for it earlier this year.
Have a policy called Executive Emergency Succession Plan, which is, "In the event of an unplanned and extensive, extended absence." So that's when the superintendent is still here, but just you need a, someone in the meantime. If you have your superintendent leave and you need an interim, then that's still falls under your regular hiring ability.
Right. I mean, we have a deputy superintendent right now, so I imagine if our superintendent was out for some reason, she would be.
It.
Yeah. Okay.
Note to self, I will be it.
Get ready, Dr. Dawson. No.
Oh, no, Dr. Felder's not going anywhere. She can't even get.
No, no. I didn't mean it, I didn't mean it like that. I realized as soon as it came out of my mouth, it probably sounded bad. I just meant stay ready, that's all.
I'm saying Dr. Felder can't even get sick because she's constantly it. There's no other it but her.
Yep. Well, we're grateful for both of you. All right. So, are we in agreement on that one?
Yep, so we, we think it's extraneous, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, I'll make that update. Policy 4,000, Focus on Students. I just recommend to align with the state and remove, um, there are two sentences and I'm just not sure they're, they're needed. Um, and I've noted that in the Primary Difference section and certainly Eva, if you have any thoughts. And, and this kind of goes back to what you mentioned earlier, Eva, um, that has also come up. If, if it's a law, state or federal, then we, like, we have to follow it. It doesn't need to be in a policy, but.
Yeah, I, I agree. I feel like those sentences, I mean, like everything, they probably came from somewhere and it's a, a nice bit of writing by someone, but I'm not sure what it means. Students must accept the responsibilities connected with these rights and I'm not sure that it fits in this policy.
Well, let's chop it.
I agree with Melanie.
Thumbs up, thumbs down, boardroom, thumbs up, thumbs up. All right, next.
All right, so the.
We're gonna try to do this fast, Melanie.
It's fun. Um, uh, the next policy, uh, 4,001, I don't want to get a spreadsheet, um, Equal Educational Opportunities. Just the, the, the differences I'm updating are provided. So number one, we do have a difference that I don't recommend changing. Um, the state says every student, hold on, let me pull this up too, because I've got multiple things open. Um, the state says every student, but we have included, um, regardless of race, creed, color, or national origin, gender, gender identity, cultural, economic background, disability, sexual orientation. So I feel like that, um, that difference is needed because we have policies that support that. So I don't recommend changing that. Uh, number two, I do, uh, recommend replacing the second paragraph with what is stated, um, by the state. And this is just, um, basically they go into more detail and provide the, like, uh, Title IX, non-discrimination, federal law policies. They just provide all the state or federal statutes, laws that support. So that's, I do recommend that we add that. And let me just stop there and, and then I'll go to the next one. So I, I do recommend that we add that second paragraph that the state includes.
I like, um, keeping that list of, um, identities. I wondered if we could add to the end of the list, like, or any other personal characteristics to like, you know, where it says every student regardless of da, 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 da.
I like that too.
Eva, do you have any legal?
I think that's fine. Um, yeah. You can see why at some point the School Board Association just says every.
Every.
But, but I know that it's meaningful to some folks to have a list.
Okay, and Ms. Smiley, what was that you just said? I mean, I'm trying to type that. So I thought, um, we could add at the end of the list or any other personal characteristics. Because I think at one point, this list, maybe recently, we said, oh, but this is missing gender identity, this, you know, and we added things. And so if you put that at the end, should probably still update it someday, but, you know, in case we've missed something.
Okay, so I've added that, um, that, um, uh, or any other personal characteristics to add to the end of Section 1. And then the second paragraph, um, is there any concern about, um, adding what the state has with all the legal references?
I'm good with it.
I like it.
Great.
All right, and then the third, um, well, now it's number four. Our version includes a third paragraph and I recommend that we consider removing it. It actually, we're stating that the superintendent shall develop appropriate procedures to ensure public education is provided to each qualified student with disabilities. And that is noted elsewhere, so, um, I, I don't think it needs to be there.
I strongly agree with this recommendation because also the superintendent doesn't really do that. We work on procedures that are given to us by the state for that, so I, I agree with this recommendation.
This is a good example of one where when we're bringing it forward and saying, and then we're gonna take out this portion about something protecting the rights of kids with disabilities that we'd want to be able to, maybe even in the abstract for the meeting, right, include that rationale.
Yeah, and certainly you have far more detailed policies about that elsewhere.
Um, can I ask a question real quick, Eva? When we bring these recommendations to the full board, do we, for first reading, do we need to go through them piece by piece with the public before the board votes on them? Or is this something we could put on the consent agenda twice?
I don't think you need to go through it piece by piece. As long as the strike-throughs are posted there and you, your, your materials are generally posted, you know, in advance, then if the public has a concern, they know how to read you. And, and that's why you have two readings, you know, even if they were just posted the day of the meeting, they're then there for two weeks or four weeks until the next meeting.
Okay, we do.
Okay, sorry.
No, I'm sorry, go ahead. We can move on.
Okay, um, so the next one is, uh, policy 4,003, Translating Policies for Students and Parents, um, the update. Okay, so the, the state includes, "During non-instructional time, staff in the English Learner Services Department may assist schools and the superintendent may explore additional options for providing translation interpretations." Um, I don't recommend that we add the first sentence, uh, because we, uh, or the board addressed that in the, you know, um, a directive where we have the liaisons. And, and, and there's also a policy, uh, well, and, so, so one, I, I don't think we put that on the English Learner Services Department. But the second piece is I do recommend we add the second sentence, that the superintendent may explore additional options. And then it doesn't have to be the English Language Learners Department. It could be our liaisons, it could be contracted services. I mean, as long as we're providing translations and interpretation services as needed. And we don't have that, so I'm just, um, I'm just stating that we add the one sentence that the superintendent can look at other options.
I will say, given that, if you're not gonna include the sentence about using ESL staff, I'm not sure you need the second sentence because it's saying other departments also, but your policy is already a, doesn't, is not department-specific. So your policy as it stands right now just says, "The school system will provide translations of pertinent school system information and policies."
Oh, that's a good point. And that's, and that's what we just had in the other one that we removed. If, if we have to do it, it doesn't really matter how, we just are going to do it. That's a good point.
So then that would be no update. Is that right?
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the next one, this is a policy specific to Orange County Schools. It was last, uh, updated in, uh, 2012, uh, Senior Citizen Admittance Fee Waiver Policy. This would be, um, I think this is a great policy. This would be an example where the state recommends that it's not a policy, but it's, it's an expectation, a guideline, an initiative, a program.
A practice.
That we just ensure everyone's aware of it.
Right.
Yeah, it's, it is, it's, I think it's an example of something that's a little too specific for, generally for board policy, although it's also fine and if you want to keep it, it's fine.
I don't mind cutting it, but I do worry about this whole list of things we're cutting and the public being like, well, these crazy people are gonna take out this.
Yeah.
Can I say, um, I know this is specific to Orange County Schools. I, of course, was around when this happened and I know who put it on the table and I know how important it is for the community, because so many of us are old. And, um, you know, we have something to reference here that we can get into these sporting events, you know, or whatever without a charge, because we have a lot of people coming from different places and they don't have, and, and I call it a practice, because it is, it's been a practice in Orange County Schools. And speaking of that, it says, "Orange County School District" on the front of my computer here. Well, we'll fix that, won't we, Melanie? But anyway, I just, I'm looking at the policy and it says, "Orange County School District." Anyway, I, I just, I, I sort of agree with Hillary. I'd like to just leave it because that's been, it's important to our community and we, we kind of like getting in events free of charge. And if we had all these new people come along, they wouldn't understand it and they won't know where it came from. And the person who put this on the table is, is around and.
Um, the one thing, I mean, I don't have any problem keeping it, especially because I just can't imagine this is gonna cause us legal trouble if we leave it on the books. I mean.
It's fine, it's fine.
I think it will cause us trouble if it, if it went away. You know, because Hillary, it, it would be like, you know, these new people coming around getting rid of everything that we tried to put in place, so.
Well, I trust, um, Madam Vice Chair's historical knowledge and think that we should just keep it as is for now.
Yeah, it's like a little signal. Yeah, it's like a little signal that like we welcome and value senior citizens.
And sometimes I think it's important to spell it out even if you don't have to.
Yeah, because when you're seniors, you don't under, understand things quite as, um, quickly as others, so it's good to have it spelled out.
Well, I think also being able to print it, if you're nervous about showing up and expecting a free ticket, is kind of a nice.
Good point, good thing, right.
It's like a little insurance policy.
Right, because you might have somebody sort of new at the ticket gate, you know? And they, and they would know about the, if you're old, you get in for free.
And I also thought when I reviewed this, that this is, um, is also an example of a policy that, to your point, Ms. Stevens, if there's someone new and they don't know there's a policy, so we want to make sure that people are aware of this internally as well, especially when we're back having games and, and tickets.
And I think it would be cool to advertise it. I mean, I think, you know, in non-COVID times, it's a great community event and if our, um, senior citizens can get in for free, that's all the better. Like, we should put up a standing vinyl sign at the senior center, like, "Did you know you can come to Orange County Schools games for free?"
Good point. That's a good point, Ms. McKenzie.
Uh, side note, I had this in a previous district and they were, we had gold cards and everyone had a gold card and it, they got into not just sporting events, but they got into musicals, anything we did.
Oh, we should do that. That would be so fun. Oh, I like that. Well, I'm gonna put that on my list to talk about later. I think the idea, well, I mean, I think that's good PR for the district too, like giving all the senior citizens gold cards to come to anything in our district. All the grandparents get in for free to their families, events, theater, whatever. I mean, I think that's just good community stuff, so, anyway, okay, putting my soapbox away. Excited to talk about that one later.
Okay, I've got, all right, I've added that to a sticky note. All right. Um, let me go down. Okay, now, uh, 5025, uh, Prohibition of Alcoholic Beverages. The, um, update I'm recommending, uh, one is that we add the sentence, um, the state has, uh, um, adds, "Any person who possesses, consumes, uses, or appears to be under the influence of alcoholic beverages or illegal drugs will be asked to leave the school property or event immediately." And, and then it goes into the sentence we have, but they have that addition and I don't see any reason why we wouldn't, um, follow that guidance.
Thumbs up for me.
Yep, and then the second part, uh, to, uh, I'm, I'm just adding that we consider adding, they, um, note that student con, uh, conduct is further governed by policy 4325, Drugs and Alcohol, which we do have. And that employee conduct is fur, further governed by policy 7240, Drug-Free and Alcohol-Free Workplace. That basically there's, there's more to it if you're a student and there's more to this if you're an employee.
We should probably have one that says, "There's more to it if you're a board member." So with no particular reason at all.
But, you know, it should be all across the board, you know?
Totally.
Pun intended. I just realized that. I guess, but you know, because we have had these instances for employees and students and so, yeah, yeah. Good, 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 good.
I mean, I don't know that there's anything to add to that for board members, but I do think it, do you think board members are covered in this, Eva? Because it is kind of a gray area.
I think we added something to a board member conduct policy recently.
Or the ethics policy?
I can't remember exactly which one, but yeah.
I think it was the ethics policy now, I think about it. I think it was the ethics policy now, I think about it. But I guess if it says, if we add any person who possesses, consumes, uses, or appears to be under the influence of alcohol, would be asked to leave school property or event immediately. I mean, that, that would be covered.
Yeah, this, this is sort of the community policy, making it clear that like, no one can come to the football game drunk. And then if you're a student or a staff member, see also.
Yep, okay, cool, I'm good.
Okay, that's a good summary, Eva. The next policy, 5026, Smoking and Tobacco Products. So there's three considerations. Oh, no, sorry, not three, just as an FYI. We went further into detail. And, and in paragraph one, we also added that it includes smoking, chewing, dipping, and other use. I don't recommend changing that unless Eva does. Also, as an FYI, we include an item two. School system employees and volunteers may not use tobacco products at any school event they are attending in an official capacity. So Eva, do you have any, like, heartburn about leaving those two things in? I don't.
No, I don't. And I'll note that this policy, I was looking to see if it included vaping, and it does.
Okay, and then the only update that I'm recommending is to replace item three with the state language, that nothing in this policy prohibits the use of tobacco products for instructional or research activity conducted in a school building, provided that such activity is conducted or supervised by a faculty member, and that the activity does not include smoking, chewing, or otherwise ingesting tobacco.
I'm good.
Yep.
Okay, so, so, and then the second page, so there's only one update, which is that we're, the statement about it could be part of a research, but they can't ingest it or chew it or any of that. The second piece is that this is an example of a double policy, where the state recommends that we, we also add 7250, and that we have this in two locations to ensure it's seen by students and staff.
So it's just the one policy? We're not trying to make two separate policies, but there's the two references. Shows up in two both places, okay.
Double number.
Right, so anytime we would reference Policy 5026, it would automatically have a dash, and it would always be Policy 5026 dash, or whatever that's called, 7250. They're always together, those two numbers.
Well, I've seen that in some other districts, yeah.
Yeah, I'm good with that. Okay, we're good.
All right, the only, 5027, Weapons and Explosives prohibited. We have the exact same thing as the state. They just have it as a double policy, and it's also located as Policy 7275.
So that would essentially double number it in community and personnel.
Okay, and then the last policy, 5029, Service Animals in Schools. Just as a, I, I don't recommend that we update unless Eva thinks that we should. But I just want to note that our policy includes pretty specific details. Number one, we include applications for use by an employee. Should be submitted to the Chief Human Resource Officer. If it's a student, it goes to the Chief Academic Officer, which we don't have that title right now, and how to min them. I, I just don't know that we need all that, and if we do, we need to update it.
Yeah, I actually noted, I made a note on that, that I had a concern specifically about, applications will be reviewed annually prior to the start of the year. I think what that means is people who already have service animals will, like, relook at it every year, which A, I don't think you need to do, but B, it could be interpreted to mean, if you get a service animal in November, we'll look at it next year, and that, that's not cool. So I agree that. I guess what I would recommend, as I'm looking at your policy manual, is that we have what we would call a procedure or an RMP for this one, that says like, and so a procedure or an RMP, meaning regulation and procedure, is essentially connected to a policy, but it's like implementation guidance that's developed by the superintendent and doesn't have to come to the board if it's updated. And so that would be where we would have a list of who you call for what. And that way, you know, if we need to change a name on it, the superintendent can just change the name. So that would be my recommendation, is that we take out that section about who you submit your application to and how often it'll be reviewed, because I think that is overly detailed for the policy, and I do have some concerns about it. But then develop like a separate attachment that says, here's who you call, and where you get your forms, and that sort of thing.
Madam Chair, I know why all of these details are here. I think we need them. But if you put them somewhere else, that's fine, I can fill you in later. But there is a reason for all of this.
Okay.
Well, the RMP would still be attached in the policy manual. It would just be the procedure for the policy, right?
That's my suggestion.
Okay, make sure the procedure, make sure it's all clear.
Make sure it's really clear and detailed.
Because, yeah, it, it would end up being a situation for Melanie and Dr. Felder.
All right, I recommend no changes.
So it sounds like, just to make it clear, we probably ought to have the RMP attached so that people can see that we're not just eliminating this. I can do that, that's, that's.
Would you feel good about that, Brenda?
Yes, yes ma'am.
Okay. Cool.
Melanie, I'll make a note that I need to follow up on this one.
Okay, so I'll make note that we're removing that first item one, but that, that we're adding the RMP as an attachment.
Can I ask a broader question about procedures related to the policies? Do we have, I think maybe the answer is no. Is there a, like, behind the scenes for our policy handbook? Here are the procedures associated with lots of different ones, so that staff know? No, Eva, is that a thing that other school districts have?
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of policies that say the superintendent should develop guidelines to implement this.
Yes.
And some of those, so if you look, I was going to pull up, like, the Wake County Board policy uses that a lot. They do attach them to the policy in their policy manual. So if you, I was looking to see if they have a service animal RMP. But, so yes, that's, and, and we wouldn't necessarily do it for every single policy that says that, because sometimes it's in the student handbook, or it's in the transportation handbook, or whatever. But, but yes, other districts do make more use of the RMP or procedure that they actually attach in the policy manual. But that, like I said, doesn't have to be brought back every time you need to change the name of the Title IX Coordinator, or whatever.
Because I can see, I can see why some of those, why you would have those right in the policy manual. But even just generally for the district, I like, ours includes a lot of the superintendent will come up with a plan for this. And for the sake of continuity, and, you know, incoming cabinets knowing how different things work and all kinds of stuff like that.
And it is, it's something where we get caught out a lot, not in Orange specifically, but a lot of our policies say that. And people will say, well, where's your, you know, show me the guidelines. And, you know, that policy's from 2004, and the superintendent's only been here two years, and they don't, you know, nobody knows what they're talking about. So, again, not an Orange-specific thing, but it is, you know, it would be better if we had a centralized repository.
Yeah, that might be a longer-term thought to think about, is having that be it. And Melanie, or, well, anybody from the cabinet who's here, like, I don't know what it looks like as you've come into your roles and had like transition into your roles and being sort of responsible for implementation of some of these policies. But I would imagine, I mean, just with like, a lot of turnover, it may not always be clear that these policies exist, or what the procedure is, and that kind of thing. One of the things that just, that made me think of that is, several years ago, I went to a conference about, like, gender identity policies and support guidelines and things like that. And, and one of the people who spoke there said, you know, there, there may, it may not be in the policy, but there would be a procedure around that, you know? And coming back, and, you know, the conversation we had was, you know, our, basically, our staff knows what to do. Like, our staff knows what to do, you know? And then all the people involved know what to do. And that was sort of where it was left. And I think eventually what we learned is we needed to actually get the gender support guidelines clear about what this district does, you know? But it just makes me wonder whether there are other opportunities like that for just like, having documentation of how something is supposed to work.
I'll just follow up, Teresa and I are probably not the people to ask. And I only say that because I spend a lot of time in policy, and I come to all the meetings, so I am cognizant and aware. And I know Teresa has a lot of policies as well, generally.
And probably a lot of, like, type procedures for things, I would imagine. Maybe we can just keep an eye out for that, too, right? In these policies where it says, and the superintendent will come up with a plan. We'll say, like, is that on paper somewhere?
Yeah, or does it need to be shall, could it be may?
I'll put that on my list, too, talk to Dr. Felder about and get her thoughts about, too.
Well, at our, a policy meeting, several policy meetings, we made a decision that we would get rid of all of the shalls and put may. And I have, actually I have a note here on, it was, when did we say that? We said, let's get rid of shall and put may. And that was when we were doing our, oh, I won't say which policy it was, because the superintendent shall develop administrative procedures to implement the requirements, da-da-da-da. And so there's a note that I had written here, go through the policies and remove the shalls and put may. So maybe that's a Theron Smith recommendation, Eva, because that was a note from Jonathan.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I agree, getting rid of those shalls.
Okay, so the item two in 5029, again, I'm just, okay, just advising that we also include service animals will be permitted on school system transportation unless inconsistent with safety requirements. And then we refer to Students' IP or Section 504. I'm just noting that the state does not include this, and wondering if, if we need to, or if it should be added as part of that RMP.
I think it would fit well in an RMP. It doesn't offend me if it's in the policy. So, but in the interest of, of streamlining and being consistent, consistent with the models where it doesn't matter, you know? Inconsistent with the models when it's important.
Well, I think I'm fine if it's an RMP, if it's going to be attached. Agreed.
Yep. Okay. So it sounds like we will sort of revert to the basics for this policy and to the model policy, but then have an RMP with our details and procedures.
And the final recommendation is that this would be a triple policy. Right now, it's located in community, but I would recommend that we add it to students and personnel. And that is what the state does.
Oh, yes. When you say personnel, you're talking about staff or board members?
Yes.
Sounds good. Well, Melanie, I know this was a ton of work. Thank you for getting us started on this process. I feel like this worked really well and expeditiously. Does anyone else have feedback about anything that would make it easier?
Yeah, this worked well. Now, I do have a question. Again, I picked up my old policy notebook with some notes, because one thing sounded familiar. Did we, I have a note here that said, policy, we have, there's Policy 1010, we need to delete Policy 2001. And you see there, it is up there. And so evidently, it should have been deleted. And that's what we said this morning, because they were somewhat redundant.
Huh, when was that from?
I have it here, that was before, well, anyway. Yeah, I have it here that, well, Jonathan was the attorney, and, well, you weren't here. That's why, you weren't here, Hillary. But yeah, it says, delete 2001, and, because we have 1010. And that's basically what we did this morning, isn't it?
Much. If anybody has said anything ever, Brenda's got it in a notebook.
I have a notebook!
Yeah. Love it. All right, well, the other thing I wanted to say, that Melanie and I had briefly talked about, was the possibility of this summer, this committee may be needing to spend some time at Central Office doing some of this. I mean, I guess we do it via Zoom, too, to try to knock out a bigger number of them, because there are just so many. So I'm just putting that out there as a, we might need to do it. But we're going to try to get our system in place through the next couple of months. And then we may want to sit down and knock out a huge number of them. But I know that that, it takes staff work to get to that point. So we'll just follow your lead, Melanie and Teresa. And, and I'm excited about getting it all caught up.
That's right.
Well, I agree, I think this has been a great process, Melanie. Thank you for all your work on this. And I, I like how quickly it went. It was very efficient and effective.
Does anyone have anything else? I will take a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn, Madam Chair.
Second.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Miley?
Yes.
Yes, also, we're adjourned. Thanks, everyone, for your work.
So Sarah, Sarah and Hillary, I can, do you all know how to do, how to do a three-way call? I know you do, because you're young.
I, we can go into my WebEx room.
Oh, yeah, I just want to talk to you all for about five minutes.
Okay, I'll send you the link.
Okay.
Okay.
Everyone who.